But I. Yeah, but it was hard for me to figure out quite what that accommodation or that conformance was. Does that mean that all the, all the buildings in all the phases will be twenty feet or more from the set, from the creek?
From the creek.
It says creek setback is twenty feet in the new proposal on package page one eighty-six. This was, I believe, to the A R C.
I believe the, the setback is actually well over twenty feet from the top of bank for this project. In the planning commission agenda report, there should have been a table that identified the development standards or project statistics, and in that there should have been a minimum setback for the creek should have been identified as greater than the twenty feet. And then also the requirement from the zoning regulations is twenty feet, so that should be identified in there as well. I don't have the packet in front of me, but I can, I can pull it up in a moment.
Yeah, it, there was a lot of drawings and a lot of, lot of paper to go through online on this one. So I, I may have been looking at an earlier review of the, of a revision of a proposal, but I just wanted to make sure about the setback. And you're saying it's more than twenty feet in many cases or most cases.
The setback is listed on page twelve of the package.
Yeah. Page fifteen?
Twelve.
Yeah, it lists the setbacks as on the east boundary twenty-four feet. On the south boundary, twenty feet, from the west boundary, twelve.
Right. And the south boundary is the, okay, thank you.
I believe the north boundary is where the creek is, correct, Kyle?
Yes.
That is correct.
The south bounty, boundary is with the R two, the existing R two housing, I believe.
Yes.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for Kyle?
I have one question, Chairman. Kyle, in your presentation just a moment ago, you mentioned, I believe, a thirty-foot setback between the windows on the south facing buildings to, and I wasn't sure if it was to the property line or to the adjacent buildings on the south side. Can you clarify that?
Certainly, yeah, I did say specifically the thirty feet is from existing structures. So it was a twenty feet from the property line, and then it's more than thirty feet from the structures on the R two property.
Okay, and the minimums, the minimum setback was, was twenty-three feet on the, under the edge conditions? Was that, is that right?
Yeah, let's see, well, it's, 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 the height staggers with the higher you go. So it's an upper story step back requirement. So the minimum setback for the property is actually ten feet. And then as you go taller, you're supposed to step it back further. And I believe the structure exceeds the minimum requirements. I might have, I might have a slide in here that has that. There we go.
Page fifty-nine of our packet, there's a set of cross-sections that with the setbacks of the different phases.
And page.
One way to look at it.
Yeah, this.
But here, here you can see how the buildings are a step back even further than the minimum requirement. The minimum requirement is shown in the dotted lines. And then, as you can see, each building has provided the, a greater setback for the maximum setback rather than build up to the setback on the lower levels.
Okay, so the, the structures comply with the edge condition setbacks. And what about the balconies? They're allowed to project into the required setback, correct? So in, in this case, the balconies are relying on a, or we're, we're relying on a projections into the required setback, right, for the balconies?
No, that's a, that's actually a separate section. The section we're looking at for balconies is under the edge conditions. The language within the code specifically says that balcony facing the R two property would be prohibited. And so the applicant is asking for a concession from that development standard to provide those balconies with the justification that they are provided with greater setbacks than what it would normally be required. Because you are correct that under normal situations, if there wasn't a manufacturing zone, the applicant would have been able to provide those balconies beyond the setback under that, the setback sections without any sort of exception. And that would be further intruding upon privacy and overlook.
Okay, I understand. I guess my question really is, when we say that there's a, let's say, for example, a twenty-three-foot setback required under the edge conditions, in this case, is that twenty-three feet being measured to the balcony or to the structure?
Let's see, I guess it would be the top of the structure. So the tallest point of the structure would require that twenty-three-foot setback. But like, as I said earlier, the lower levels can step in. So if you you see here, the top of this building, which is close to thirty-four feet. Let's see, can you see my mouse on the screen? Yeah. See if I can go back. There we go. So the top of the building, it would be thirty-four feet, requiring that twenty-three-foot setback. But down below, where you see the third floor is actually at twenty-one feet. That requires a different setback than the maximum for the edge condition. So this would actually be able to step in a lot closer to that, this dotted line. And so the, it's not a hard twenty-three feet for the lower levels. As does it, yeah, does that help?
Okay, well, let me, let me try to rephrase the question. Do all the balconies on the south side and the east side fall or meet the edge condition setback?
For the tallest point of the structure?
Wherever they're required to meet the setback to the.
Well, then, yes. The answer is a blanket yes, that all the balconies that are being proposed are well below the setback requirements for the structure.
Great, thank you. Sorry if I didn't phrase that clearly the first time, first.
I'm gonna say sorry with that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and ask one question, if that's okay. I was gonna wait until after the applicant presentation for this, but I think I'll just go ahead and ask it now because it's mostly for staff. There were some public comment. Public comments about concerns about traffic on Bridge Street being increased due to the ninety-four units. And I know, you know, based on our, our recent previous history about the, the rules about total vehicle miles traveled and the jobs housing imbalance in our city and that local traffic on a particular street doesn't really, doesn't really impact the approval or disapproval of a project. But I wondered if you could talk a little bit about what you and I talked about earlier, explaining the impact of the cars on the additional traffic on this local street as indicated by the, the number of travel miles or number of trips at, at peak times and the like we talked about earlier today.
Absolutely. So the, I did provide a memo in the agenda correspondence that I did a, to talk to these points about transportation. I don't have it right in front of me, but if my memory serves me, I believe the original, and they gave negative declaration for the original project identified a vehicle mile, peak vehicle trips in the A M at nineteen vehicles. And then in the P M peak hours, it was twenty-three vehicles. Our transportation division did evaluate the, the peak trips for this proposed project and identified that the the changes would be twenty-nine vehicles at A M peak hours. And I believe thirty-five vehicles at, at P M P. So that, that change from initial project to this project does not cross any thresholds or changes to the evaluation or identifying any level of significance that would be sensitive to the environmental review. The average daily trips for Bridge Street are over fifteen, around approximately fifteen hundred. And so this project is still falls well below that. And so there is no additional impacts identified regarding transportation for this project. I think a lot of people might have a misunderstanding because there isn't a building in here that is dedicated to senior living. And so the impact for traffic from that building does substantially lower the overall trips generation on the site.
Thank you. I think that's all right now.
Okay, any other questions of any, from any commissioner? Well, let's move on then to the applicant's presentation. Hi, this is Kevin, I'm just promoting them now. I have a, if Joel's, if Joel's is Joel Snyder, please raise your hand.
Kevin, I believe Scott Smith was going to provide an introduction.
Okay. I have promoted him. All right, Kyle, just to, just going through your list, I've got Scott Smith, Michael Burke, Isling Burke, Joel Snyder, and Steven Torres. I found in the attendee list from your list, the only one that was missing was Jesse Skidmore. I believe that I have all of them. Are any of those folks raising their hand figuratively to, to speak? I think once.
Go ahead and try to speak so we can see if we can hear you.
Yeah, yeah, my mic's on, so you should be able to hear me, I would think.
Good.
You guys ready, everybody ready for?
We're ready.
Oh, okay, awesome. I was like, okay, go. Thank you for having us tonight. My name's Scott Smith, I'm the executive director of Haslow, the Housing Authority of San Luis Obispo. We're excited to bring this, this development to you tonight. Mainly, we're excited because it meets such a huge need in the community and, and it is, we believe, very, very consistent with not only city policies as well as state goals and state policies. And, you know, specifically for the city, as you all know, that the council deliberates every year on what their, their primary goals are gonna be, that they're gonna really put energy behind and direct staff to spend time on. And affordable housing, housing again is right up there in the top five. Namely, you know, the missing middle and affordable housing are the ones that are pushing it to that, into that category. So that's a good thing that we're able to bring this to you. It's also consistent with your land use element, your housing elements, your zoning ordinances, including these concessions, because those are written into your ordinances and into your general plan. And it's consistent with state laws, such as the Housing Affordable, Housing Accountability Act and the State Density Bonus Law. And we think it's because of these reasons that the staff are recommending approval and that your architectural review committee unanimously recommended the project on July nineteenth of this year. You know, Haslow, we serve about three thousand households every single month with their housing needs. But what that number doesn't tell you is that that's, that's low because all, all of our waiting lists are really, really long, so we just can't take very many more people in. Or in many cases, those waiting lists for our various programs are completely closed. So if we were able to leave those open or just keep adding, the numbers would, would be much greater. But the, the real story is a human story. About all those people that are working one or more jobs that can't even rent a one-bedroom apartment, can't afford to rent a one-bedroom apartment in the city, or the senior or disabled person on fixed income who, and this, we're seeing this happen more and more, is displaced because, because they get a large rent increase and they just can't survive it. So we think this is an ideal location. It's next to a beautiful park as well as bicycle and pedestrian paths right next to the South Hills Open Space Trails and public transit access on both Higera Street and South Street. And, and you know, it's in the city, that, and that's a huge plus, that the fact that we, that the city's documents still indicate that there's a, a jobs housing imbalance of about two and a half jobs for every housing unit imbalance, and, and they translate into about, there's about nine thousand adults coming into the city every day during weekdays as a result of that. And so we think this fits in really well with some of the city work that they're doing now. They're labeling, labeling it environmental justice. There was a work group, I know, that went last night and we couldn't attend, but we provided some survey comments. So we think this goes a long way towards furthering that, that goal as well. I wanted to just clarify one, one small point for you, and then I'm gonna turn it over, is that under the state law, we're allowed to ask and be granted an eighty percent density bonus. And we've asked for twenty-four percent. So we don't feel like this is a, a super aggressive site plan or a super aggressive ask, so to speak. And, and you know what you're getting, we're proposing a hundred percent affordable units. And normally with a twenty-four percent density bonus, you know, we're technically legally only required to provide, I, I think it's thirteen percent of the units that's affordable, which would be like twelve units out of this project. So, so I just wanted to lay that as sort of a baseline. We think we're coming in with something that's reasonable. We're not pushing the envelope in terms of concessions or densities or anything like that. And then I'm just gonna mention this quickly because I, I want to just have it go on the record. That three years to pull all building permits on every phase of this is very ambitious. And it's like more than ambitious because it, because you need to understand affordable housing financing. This is not a normal project. This is, these are affordable developments. And so what drives that timeline is the availability of that financing. So if there is any discretion on that three years, I would ask that the commission build that discretion into your approval. You don't get affordable housing projects coming on along very often. So I just thought I would mention that. With that, thank you, I'm gonna turn it over. We're so thrilled to be working with Tenover Studio. We've got Joel Snyder here to walk you through some of the technical aspects of the project and their thought process and designing a really great development for the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. All great points. You know, and to your end point, and I think it came up in one of the neighbors' correspondence was timeline to build out, I mean, just even, not even layering on affordable housing financing requirements just to pull permits these days in the state of California is, that, that's an ambitious timeline. So all that to say, we'll be working feverishly to get this project done as quickly as possible. I'm gonna do my plug for Haslow that they never asked me to do that I do as an individual. And just, we're gonna be talking about some edge conditions and some balconies. And, you know, I'm sure there's concern of, you know, noise and et cetera. You know, having lived in this community for a number of years, they're your best landlords. You know, you've maybe noticed the amount of work they've been doing to their projects around town. Really upgrading landscaping facades. I mean, they have a maintenance staff, they have, you know, staff to make sure that any issue that's out there is an issue that's dealt with. I mean, you don't get that with a private landholder. So I just, it's a plug I make for all our affordable housing developers. But it is really important when we look at these projects to understand that they are on, on it twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They're, they're really the best landlords out there. We'd all be privileged to have them as our landlord. So that's, that's my personal plug. I like to do that every time. I mean, we're really, really boring today, and I'm just gonna read this presentation to you. What I like about this presentation is more or less what we, what we provided the A R C and what you're going to see in this presentation is the italicized words are the changes we made to the plans. It's really plain and simple, but it makes it really clear as to where we were with A R C and where we are today. So the project overview, as you already know, as Kyle does always such a great job of introducing our projects as a face mixed, mixed-use project in the M zone. It's affordable housing with multifamily and senior living. As Kyle also mentioned, the senior living having the very minimal impact on traffic. And there's a small commercial manufacturing shell because it is an M zone. Also that I saw came up in correspondence with the community was the flood zone requirement. And we were what, you know, we have to build these buildings on a podium due to the flood zone. So we are well out of the flood zone with any living units. So do I control or you guys control and move slide down? You know, I think this is a great slide. I love context slides. You know, these buildings really fit in with the neighborhood. Especially this neighborhood, this has got some really cool architecture, period. There's some great old buildings, there's some great new buildings, and we're just sliding there in the middle and, and trying to complement, not be really over the top in any way. So neighboring residences to the west and south are contemporary and industrial style. Neighboring residents to the east are separated by visual barriers surrounding their industrial buildings are quite a bit larger in scale than what we're dealing with here. And surrounding materials include corrugated metal, stuck horizontal wood and vertical siding. And that's what we are doing here. And we, I think, took a little bit extra care to bring in some colors that are warm in color palette. And as it says, to complement the natural colors of the hillside. So that's, that's where we're coming at from, from that standpoint. Next slide, please. Building setbacks, this came up a bit in your folks' questions. It's a little bit small, but you can see that we are, all of our buildings are well outside the required setbacks. I mean, we're showing the setbacks here, but the required setbacks are, are quite a bit smaller. I think that's gonna come up in a later slide. I think we have to dwell on this one too much. Let's go to the next slide, please. Yeah, so site split planning, open space and natural features, the project's providing a pedestrian connection over the bridge. There is, there is metal park there and South Hills Open Space. I live in this neighborhood, there's a lot of great open space. Central courtyards at each building. And this is where we're gonna start talking about balconies. We had some pretty open balconies. And the italicized words say the balconies are private, provided with more opaque guardrail design to provide additional privacy. We didn't go completely opaque. We screened them quite a bit more than they were. I really think this balcony issue is a landlord issue. And, you know, I, I understand, you know, hiding, hiding personal effects and, and whatnot. And probably when we get to the setback in edge condition, it becomes a little bit more important. But we, we're making them more opaque, we're making them a little more private, we're making them a little bit more obscure. I don't think we have to go full opacity here, but, but it is a change over what was there before. Parking and driveways parking complies at each phase, I think that's important, so we have enough parking for each phase. Wider drive aisle and fire truck turnaround provided. Apologies for the dog. If you guys can all hear that. Secondary site egress is not required with less than a hundred units, which we are. And again, the italicized is now we've, parking screening is provided in all portions of the building. And the screening in the central courtyard areas is dropped to six feet. And it starts, and starts one foot from finish grade. So I, I think this was a comment from A R C. If you look at the upper image on this slide, our screening went from the bottom of the, well, basically from pavement to bottom of podium. And we, we think the request from A R C was to allow a little bit more transparency here. So this is, I'm not sure it matters to you commissioners or not, but we really did wanna screen the parking from the courtyard. If we didn't provide the screening, you'd be looking at the front bumpers of these cars. We like our screening, it's open screening, it's, it's, you know, not, we are in a flood zone, we gotta let water pass through. It's, it's visually attractive, but it does take away from the presence of the cars in the courtyard. So we like it. I think we're accomplishing that goal in any way. So if you have any questions about that later, happy to answer. Next slide, please. This is probably the, the bulk of the comments is our edge conditions. Again, we talked about how we made the, oh, the balconies more opaque. So keep in mind on these sites, the buildings facing adjacent residences, the balconies that we do have there are more opaque. Of course, I, I think what's worth to note is the yellow shaded area is the required setback. So we could build the building up to the area shown in the yellow. I think for me, this is really important. We are well outside of that setback. In addition to being well outside of the setback, we have a lot of landscape screening. We have a lot of grade change. You can really see that in these sections. And so this twelve-inch offset requirement, I think is really for buildings that really come up to that setback line and buildings that are really adjacent on both side and maybe up to that setback line on both sides of the property line. But we are well outside of that. I think that's, that's good for the neighbors to know, it's good for the commissioners to know. You know, we really did look at that early on. And we really thought that was of benefit. And again, balconies, of course, are of benefit to the units. It says it right here, and I've said it a bunch of times already, that the Haslow does a, a great job of managing their tenant balconies. This is by far not the first project balconies and balcony management have come up. It's every single project. These guys are really in tune with this issue, they really do take care of it. So again, opaque, more opaque guardrail design to provide additional privacy. And west facades, windows, you know, I think it's, you can see in a couple of these sections in section two, we're really looking out through landscaping, through fencing onto roofs, really one and two, three and four. I think the next slide kind of illustrates this a bit more. This is good in plan, showing, this is one I really just gotta read verbatim. Green overlay represents windows which comply with a twelve-inch minimum offset from adjacent R two zone. Yellow overlay represents windows which do not comply with a twelve-inch minimum offset but are blocked by proposed landscape. And the red overlay represents windows which do not comply with a twelve-inch minimum offset. As you already know, the project requests a waiver of that zoning regulation. To achieve the, to achieve the requested density, windows would need to be provided as shown to meet requirements for compliance with emergency egress. The project setbacks, as you saw in previous slides and even on this slide, are significantly larger than required by zoning regulations. And I would argue that this twelve-inch offset off at this distance is, is really. At this distance is is really irrelevant. The need for window offset at further distances becomes less relevant in providing privacy, which I guess is what I just said. The proposed projects finish floors vary. From those in adjacent residential buildings, creating natural vertical offsets and reducing line of sight. And proposed tree species will range from thirty to fifty feet in height when mature and will be planted more. Mature during construction. And I think there are some requested. Conditions that speak to that. That will probably get to later. Next slide, please.
Mr. Snyder, before you leave that that sheet. So just so I understand the map on top. So the the green, there's no problem. The yellow, there is not the offset, but there is, there is landscape, there are trees. In front. And the red is, the red are the ones where you do not have the offset. Or the landscape. So we are really talking about two of them.
Two windows.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, can I, can I chime in on that? Just one. So and the there's, so with the two windows. That Commissioner Donacar just pointed out that are red and there is no offset and no landscaping. There's no way to provide a buffer to a landscape buffer with those two. Locations because of the, because of some other elements there.
Correct. I think the the biggest thing here is the fire truck turnaround. And the paving that's there, we just don't have the room to provide significant mature. Landscaping and achieve that fire truck turnaround.
And what is the distance from window to window between the R two and the new proposed buildings for those two? How far apart are they?
Eight to fifty. I mean, what do we got on the slide above? Who's ever in control? It really sort of shows that. Like a minimum of almost forty feet, you know, you're getting near forty feet, twenty-one feet and seventeen and a half feet. You know, you're you're, yeah.
Thank you. It was hard to make sense of which building was which with all of these different visuals. Thank you.
Is that thirty-eight and a half feet? Yeah. I mean, it's significant. I mean, again, the yellow wedge, if you will, is showing what's required. I mean, I think that's the best image to describe how far outside the setback we are.
We're also talking about a level difference, right? Because the R one is about. Into halfway up the the second floor. So that the window is right where the roof line would be.
Right, right.
Right. Thank you.
So it is, it's a very, it's two instances, to put it super succinctly. It is just two instances.
Elevated. They're both elevated. They're in relative to the R one roof line.
I think in. This image. We're looking out at the. R two. Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong. This particular image shows a lookout to. Not the sections that are below.
Yeah, so this 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 exhibit, the top exhibit shows the windows that are facing the. R two properties to the south and then the two elevate, the two section cuts below that on the bottom of the screen. Are showing the residential properties to the. The east. And we and we looked at this pretty closely and because of the the change of grade and the positioning of the windows on the second and third floor. The twelve set offset is actually met along the east side of the of the property line. And so the only areas of concern are along the south side where you see the yellow and red lines shown on the map above.
So Kyle's, just so then I understand there is no elevational change between the two at the south side. What we're seeing in the sections are the east side.
Yes, but but we have section cuts up here that show that they're they're really at the same grade for the the properties to the south.
Sorry, that's an error on the slide. So that that is, there's two bottom, three numbered three and four. Are best to pair with the next slide down.
Yeah, so you see these.
Image, yes.
See, these dotted lines here are actually the ground floor of the adjacent R two zone. And so down down below that is is just unconditioned space or in some instances of years.
So to clarify, just to make sure I'm understanding. The distance between the phase one and phase two buildings and the existing R two to the south of this. Proposed project. There's still, there's about forty feet, a little less of distance between. The two buildings, but the windows that are in question that are marked in red there are at about the same level as each other or. Somewhat. They're at least at a second story level. They're not. Those those buildings that are labeled two fifty-one and two fifty-five in the existing. Properties are not single story buildings. They're they're two or more stories. So the the windows do sort of line up with each other. They're just far apart.
Yeah, correct. So if you if you look closely at it, you'll see that, you know, it just doesn't match perfectly of the twelve, twelve inch offset. And so this window was over just, you know. A few more inches and it might be able to comply, but that might, that might have to eliminate the bedroom due to required egress in some instances. And so that applicant's asking for a waiver from the development standard under the density laws law from from requiring the twelve inch offset.
I understand now. Thank you.
Does that completes your presentation?
I think we got a couple more here. I think ARC requested some color changes to accent colors to identify each building. I think we had them. All. The residential lobbies across the projects were same or similar color. They requested that we identify the lobbies. With an accent color. It's a good, it's a good comment and it's appropriate. So. The phase one A, so there's three buildings, there's, there's three major phases as we all know. And so we changed some of the colors on to the phases. So phase one A accent color, you guys can see it clearly. There's a, there was a. Blue gray siding that we changed to an orange siding at the lobby. So you know that you're associated with phase one or building one or whatever. We decide to call these buildings when they're all built out. And phase two accent color. We changed that a little bit. So you know where the lobby is on phase two. You identify with the color. You identify with your building, just a little more identity. There's a lot of the same building here. And so we thought that was a good comment. Obviously, the third building is not shown. We just left the color the same as as the accent color that was shown there. So not not, not a big requested change here, but a good change. And then next slide, please. I think this is our final slide. Just an image of the view from the bridge entry. So just leaving you with some images of the project. And happy to answer any questions.
Are there further questions from commissioners?
I have a question. Inside your presentation, inside the package, talk about a twenty-month. Construction phase or construction period for each phase. To build a building in a site work, that seems really long. I mean, a year and eight months? To build a building in a site work?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. And especially now, I'm just gonna talk about, I mean, Scott maybe can chime in, but I mean. I've got a simple residential addition and I'm gonna use the COVID excuse because it's real and I'm gonna use the supply chain excuse because it's real. That's true. Yeah, I think twenty months is appropriate for a project this scale. Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm not arguing either way. I'm just, I've built a lot of stuff in my days and it just seems long, but.
It does. I'm gonna agree with you too, you know. And you know, if I'm gonna speak about my own residential remodel. I really wish it was done.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah.
Live with it, yeah. But it just, it just, it's just, it really is. It's a real thing. It's taking longer and. And this is a big project, right? This is a big project for San Luis Obispo, and I think that's important to note. It's not, if we were in a big city, no.
Yeah.
But I, San Luis Obispo, you know, so it it takes a while. You gotta get that, those people here. You gotta get those crews here. You gotta get. It just takes a while here. I mean, that's, it is just is what it is. So, yeah, I think that's.
And and like you said, it is what it is. I'm just, I just can't wrap my head around twenty months. That's all.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I hear you.
Further questions? Commissioner Shoresman.
Yeah, I have a couple. I didn't notice in, except that there's some conditions and I know that. There needs to be certain amount of of short term and long term bike parking, but I didn't. Know where the bike storage was planned for in any of these buildings.
I think they're all on the ground floors, I believe. You're stretching my memory. I apologize. But I think we put them all in significant sized bike room. Yeah. Oh, there are in the units as as well. Did we put, did, I'm sorry, did Kyle, do you remember? Did we put any in the units?
Yeah, so the requirement is only for one bicycle parking per unit for low income housing. And it looks like based off the floor plans here, that each unit type has designed space within the units to provide the bicycle, the required bicycle parking. I didn't see anything on the ground floor, but there are, there are several storage and mechanical spaces that. Easily accommodate additional bicycle parking. I just don't know what the intent of those spaces are at this time.
So in the units, those are like wall mounts or something?
Yeah, exactly.
Would, would you and would the applicant be amicable to putting some ground floor? Parking, I know is can only speak for, you know, families. Oh, there is some, okay.
Yeah, those. We can, yeah, there's a lot of short term. Those probably are the short term, but if we can throw some extra in there and do long term, I I don't think. Any, well, there's even some on the left there, you can see. Those might just be meeting our short term. I I apologize that I don't remember the specific numbers of. Stalls required, but I I think we could certainly.
And you would be amicable to putting some longer term lockable spaces on a first floor so that people don't have to. Get them up elevators and.
Or mentor. I mean. I think we're meeting our, let's put it this way. I think we're we're meeting our requirement by putting them in the units. We're meeting our requirement for short term by putting them on the site. If we can put more on the site. I mean, I think that's practical, right? To do that.
I just know that as a small person or as a child, carting your bike up an elevator and mounting it up on the wall. Can be cumbersome and leads to scratching up walls and. It's just not super practical if you have a, if you have a first floor garage where you can easily cordon off areas and. Have them secure and lockable and maybe even some plugs on the wall for e-bikes and things like that.
Sure.
And then I was curious if if there had been any discussion on such a big lot. In such a great location, like you point out, near a park and lots of opportunities nearby for physical activity. And the tot lots that you've included, if there was ever any thought given to some community garden boxes or anything like that in this project.
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, I think there is some landscape area that we could do something. This is an incredibly. You know, with the creek setback, there there, it's interesting. There's a lot of open space here. But being sensitive to, you know, some of the edge conditions and and the creek and providing creek amenity. There's not a lot of space to do maybe a a community garden of any significant. You know, that would be significant for the folks who live here, but I mean, I think it's a great idea. I I mean, we could, those can be. Probably niched in anywhere. I don't know if Haslow has. Good or bad experiences with that or maintaining that. I mean, I do, I do. I don't wanna answer that for them.
Yeah, well, I'm I'll jump in with your permission just real quick. We love community gardens and we. We actually put in a community garden at our veterans. Development up, it's called, we call it eight sixty on the Y, but it's right at, it's on Humbert Avenue, Humbert by. By Victoria and and we dedicated the community garden to those veterans, but it's, so we, if it. So it's more of a practical thing if 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 the team can figure out, you know, placement, but otherwise. We like them for a lot, a lot of different reasons.
So so sure. I mean, I think, yeah, if we can find placement for them, that's. I guess outside of the creek setback, or maybe the city doesn't mind that it's in the creek setback. There, you know, there's. It's a, it's a good discussion point. If Haslow likes to provide them, I I don't see why we couldn't or wouldn't. It's a great amenity.
Agreed. I was just curious and wanted to throw that out there. And thank you. I think that's all my questions at this time.
Other questions or the applicant?
I have one quick question.
I think it's my first.
Thank you. I I was wondering, Mr. Snyder, if you could just. I didn't see any details of the way in which the balcony. Has the balcony enclosures have been changed. ARC passed it on to us. And I wondered if you could just, you say they're more enclosed now. Could you just explain or show us a detail?
Can you guys pull up the previous versus the new? I think you have the original entitlement package. So this is the more screened, right? Like a mash, a wire mash or a perforated metal panel. And I think you had up earlier the entitlement set. That likely shows the, what was, yeah.
I think this is actually a revised set, so I think you actually updated it in here as well.
Oh, great. So I have to before and.
But I'm I'm downloading the other plans real quick.
Okay, it it was more of a, just an open rail, right? So your code minimum four inches on center, open rail.
And so the mesh is more, less for visual and more for sort of containing.
Yes.
Material in the balcony, is that?
Yeah.
Cause visual looks pretty transparent.
Yeah, and it's it's far less transparent than it was. I mean, even some of these images show, right? Just an open, like an open rail, like you would almost on any deck. And so the. Wire mash or the perforated panel really. It does. If you're sitting down on your deck, you're not gonna have this completely open and unobstructed view. To the neighbors. And I I do, you know, I think that's, that's a legitimate concern, I suppose. And and if you. Yeah, that mesh is just a lot more opaque. You're not gonna have that literal line of sight, that eye to eye connection, you know, to. From the balconies and to the adjacent neighbors with that, that much more opaque. There you go. You can see how open they really were. If you guys toggle to a different page, they're just, you really can't see. I suppose they filter some light through, but you really would not be able to see activity through through that.
I see. Thank you.
Commissioner, welcome.
Yes, thank you. First, I'm, I wanted to commend the applicant and the designers on the pedestrian circulation. In the project shown on the plans. With the paths, various paths linking the east and west portions of the.
Um, with the paths, various paths linking the east and west portions of the side and linking the. Residential to the commercial and so forth. Um, I also noted that there were some crosswalks. It looked like crosswalks shown. That link the east and the west portion of the site going across the main driveway and also a couple of crosswalks and. Uh, some of the parking areas under the buildings. I was just wondering if those are, are supposed, intended to be painted on crosswalks? Or are they uh, different texture of materials or what's the, what's envisioned there?
I, I think what you're seeing is, you know, the ADA paths of travel that need to occur on site. Um, and those need to be painted. There are very specific code requirements for that. Um, but you're also seeing, you know, some creative paving, even shown in this picture. Um. But I, I think the crosswalks are really truly painted because they are required, they're required to be so. So they, they have to be for accessibility.
Okay, so all the uh, the crosswalks I'm seeing that have the diagonal striping, for example, across the main. Across the main drive and also in the two, uh, two parking areas. Actually, yes, uh, the phase. Two building and the phase one building are, that, those are painted crosswalks, correct?
Right, and they're on concrete and they really do wanna be that way if we're really gonna be the most strict about. ADA passive travel. That's how you're gonna wanna do it versus uh. Changing up paving types, I suppose.
Okay, I, I was just curious what was uh, planned there. Thank you.
Yeah.
Further questions? Maybe I'll ask one last quick one, uh, for Scott Smith real quickly. You were concerned about the very ambitious. Permitting schedule that's anticipated in condition number two. Are you objecting to condition number two at this point or?
Well.
This is something I should, as soon as been discussed with you.
Yeah, you know, I, I, um. You, you know, we got, we got the staff report and I, I didn't, I, I should have um, discussed it with the staff. You know, prior to tonight, I, I, I didn't flag it early on in the process, so. You know, i- if that's a condition, we'll, we'll do our best to meet it. My understanding is that there's a. There's a path for getting extensions on that, um, and I would anticipate that we would need to do that, but. Um, on, on a, you know, I think we could, we could get into construction on phase one, but to do two and three within three years. Um, I, I think it'd be hard, I, I think it's de facto almost impossible. For any affordable, not just us, it's any, any affordable development because. Um, because we have to go to the state for financing and, and it's, and you can only apply for that financing. Uh, once or twice a year, and there's a lot of variables involved in there, so it becomes, it's not really. Uh, that we wouldn't like to just get in there and build it all out, but. Typically what happens, I know the neighbors don't wanna extended construction schedule and, and really I don't see it as, as. A long drawn out construction schedule. Realistically, um, you build this and then you. You try and you try and you try to get the financing. So I really think it's gonna be a, a down period for these. Where, where it'll be calm and peaceful and life is normal. I, I don't think it's gonna be finished one and then you. Construction, you know, another twenty months and then another twenty months. That's uh, very unlikely that, that it would end up working that way. So, you know, I don't wanna. I, I don't, I just don't know if this is um, statutory in, in city ordinances or. If it's just pulled out of the sky. So I guess that would be my first question.
I can provide some clarification on that.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, so the, the, um, typically under the city's ordinance, um, the approval of an entitlement would expire after one year. Without building permits being issued or submitted uh, for review. And so uh, the. Um, regulations allow us up to the three year extension uh, for uh, under the director's authority for, for extensions up to three years. And then anything beyond that is supposed to get uh, input from the planning commission to be extended beyond the three years. And so uh, what's, the condition was designed to do was just kind of auto, automatically grant that three year uh, extension and that if um. The applicant wanted to come in and extend that further, they could come to the planning commission and present uh, maybe a. Understanding as more information about what is uh, is taking part, what the laser and part of the project and, and how an extension might be um. Helpful for granting the, the rest of the project forward. Um, so that's kind of how it's set up. That's why we chose the three years, uh, we're five, um. But we're open to changes. The planning commission has the authority to change that number. Uh, that would not be an issue under our ordinance, um, but that's just.
So it's uh, what it comes down to, it sounds like is your. Your creativity in, in designing for a site that has different kinds of housing, for instance, senior housing. That in, in, embedded, um. Seems like a really good idea, but um. No good deed goes unpunished, it sounds like, at least at the state level, in terms of working this out.
Well, part of it is, that's correct, that's correct. And it, there's, it is, the financing is really complicated for these and that. And, and that's what's so very, very different about our world versus um. A market rate developers world. They just, they go to the bank and they get their loan and it's over. Uh, we still have to compete for financing. It's a competition. We kept compete. Um, and hopefully we're, we're, we do a good job. Um, so I could see the three years, you know. And, and the other thing consideration, this is phased, so if, if it could be, you know, three years per phase or something like that, but this is. The three years doesn't seem like it fits with a phased affordable project. It's sort of a, it's, it's not a good. Um, fit for that exact condition, I guess I would say.
Scott, is the TCAT funding avail, uh, obtained for phase one already?
No, we cannot, we cannot even apply for financing until we have two things. One, we have to have an entitled development. And then we have to have um, some kind of local match committed. So those, and, and we can't get a local match, local matching monies committed until we have an entitled development. So this is stepping stone one. In, in our path towards completion.
Thank you.
So to clarify one more thing, so given what Kyle said. Um, explaining that condition and that there's, it's sort of written that there's an automatic three year extension. Would you still feel like the amount of time allowed by that condition is not sufficient and you'd be asking us to consider. Modifying that condition even further or? Or do you feel like what Kyle, with the information Kyle gave you is, is, you know, that it's sufficient as is?
Yeah, let me, let me um, think if I understand it correctly. Is it, it's, the initial is, the initial um. Expiration of the entitlements would be. Um, in three years if a building permit is not pulled and then. There's the ability to get a director's level, uh, extension of another three years. Is that? More or less accurately stating it?
Uh, I, I guess I would have to talk to, um, Michael's on the call right now, so maybe I can get some clarification from him. I can also pull up the, the section of the code that I'm referring to. Uh, but yes, it would, the, it would be for the issuance of building permits or some middle building permits within the three year timeframe. Uh, because normally under standard uh, projects, you would have one year to submit for building permits or receive issuance before the entitlement would expire. Uh, the title expires if you, unless you have an active building permit. So if you have a, your building permit is submitted and under review within. Um, submitted before the expiration date and under review, then your entitlement won't expire unless your building permit expires. Um, so that would give you a little over that three year mark, but um, you'd probably want to apply for extensions beyond that to make sure you account for your future buildings. Um, and then also the, the application for coming back in to apply for an extension. Uh, is my understanding that's uh, beyond three years would require a request in front of the planning commission. Um, but uh, given that the initial approval would be for three years under the condition that we wrote. Um, I'm not sure if an additional three years beyond that's under the director is part of that interpretation, so. Uh, Michael, I'll pull up the, the um. The section of code I'm referring to and I don't know if you have insight on this real, real quick.
And I, I, just as a side note, I would think, you know, if not now for the future, certainly, I think. If I'd been aware of this, I would have commented on your city housing element, that this is a, that. That structure is a, a really big barrier for affordable housing developments, and I think it's something the city should look at in the future.
All right, well, uh, yeah, thanks for that input and uh. In, in terms of what we've done here is just try to provide. Some flexibility by giving more time, cause we know that uh, you know, the initial building permit is unlikely to be. Be submitted in the first year, but uh, all the project has to do is submit the building permit. And that's fundamentally. Uh, what sort of perfects the entitlement. And, you know, in terms of um, the additional phases, we don't, we don't have the authority. Unless it were a concession to grant additional uh, time beyond. What the zoning regulations provides for. Um, but in all my time with the city, we've never denied an extension or, you know, even when projects go back. Have to go back for an entitlement, there's rarely had changes required, but it is a good. You know, method of uh. I guess, um. Uh, public engage, for public engagement and outreach and just to make people aware, but it isn't necessarily, you know, um. Where, where changes are required, um. I'm trying to think of other things, you know, in some cases, the applicant will make. Will be proposing changes themselves to a project after that amount of time. So the, the review makes sense and so. You know, I think in this case, providing. Three years to uh, submit a building permit application. I mean, I think Scott, basically with the way it goes is you submit the building permit application relatively quick. Because you have to get everything dialed in in order to make your, your tax credit applications and that kind of thing. You know, once the building permit application is submitted, we can, we can keep that moving. Uh, we can keep that active. I have a lot more discretion and authority to keep the building permit uh, active. You know, what we look at there is when we change code cycles, um, sometimes we'll ask you to update the plans if there's something important that's changing. Uh, in the code. Um, so I'm really, I mean, I understand the concern about the timeframes, uh, but uh, I, I don't see this as much of a constraint. And in terms of the condition of approval, that's been. Written in such a way to make it easier for you to administer your, your tax credit application. So. I think that uh, this is what we can do tonight in terms of the way the condition is written. I won't suggest any, any changes to, at this point. And um, you know, we take your input and see if we could make improvements to our code. We're actually. Uh, in the process of doing a, a sort of a cleanup amendment to our zoning regulations that'll be coming to the planning commission in a couple of months. But uh, so that might be the time to, to address it, but you know, for tonight and for what's in front of the planning commission, this is. I think uh, you know, the best we can do under what the current zoning regulation standards are to give you the flexibility you need to make that tax credit application.
And I, I just uh, wanted to clarify the condition, Kyle. Is it, do we have a three year uh, submittal requirement? Can you confirm that with me?
Yes, the three years. Would you like me to pull up the condition?
Okay, so no, you don't need to read the full condition, but I'm looking at the screen and I guess I'll just add that. You know, through the, if the project is approved, it has a one year, uh, you know, one year date to submit to building permit. And then you have three additional years beyond that, um, to, to be able to submit for um. You know, additional extensions before you need to go to the planning commission. So the way I read this. Uh, technically you would have, you know, the condition could be written in a way to add an additional year to four years and I'm just gonna. Uh, state that, but um. Before needing to go to the planning commission, but that's just food for thought for the commission. And I guess my, I guess, you know, where I'm, if this were, if this were not a phased project, it would be easier to wrap my brain around it. But because it's phased, what you're saying, if we really have to. Get into construction drawings for all three phases and submit for all three phases, really within a year, even though. We know it's, it's not gonna get built, be able to, you're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to pull those permits and pay all the fees and so on for, for all three phases. That's sort of the conundrum that we're looking at, but I understand there's, there's an ordinance involved, so there's only limited, you know, at this point, but. You know, maybe, maybe down the road, if, if you're looking at all this, there's a way that, and because affordable projects are just so different, that they've got. Some other considerations that affect their timing.
Okay, well, I think uh, I think we'll cut this off at this point. It was a good discussion. And we'll consider it, um, after we've heard from the public, but I think it's time to move to uh, public comments on this. Uh, Kevin, do we have public comments?
We have one comment at this point from Helene Finger. Helene, I'm going to go ahead and promote you to a panelist. That'll take a moment. You'll have to accept it. And then you should be able to uh, monitor your own. Audio and video. I'm gonna change the screen as well, just to show the instructions in case anybody else wants to. Join in and I'll give them the instructions on how.
Thank you.
Should I go ahead and start speaking?
Please.
Okay, first off, I wanna say I'm super excited about the project and I wanna thank everyone who's worked on it to this point. I decided to speak tonight because I don't want Haslow to pay extra money later to deal with flooding. If flooding mitigation can be addressed in the process now for less money. Um, I've heard flooding mentioned multiple times tonight. But I haven't heard a discussion of the hydrology report statements that describe. The project site currently has, and when the project is built, it will still have two feet deep of water. Sheet flowing across the entire site during a hundred year storm. So envision that, in a hundred year storm, your hydrology report says it's gonna be two feet deep of water. So based on this and my understanding of the project design, which is limited, cause I can only, you know, look at the, the um, various. Uh, drawings that were included, the water will be two feet. Deep across the entire completed development, including on walkways and roadways and parking areas. During a hundred year storm. So my question that I really want us to address um, is how is that stormwater flow? Um, gonna be handled so that residents are able to walk and drive on site during these um, storms? Or is it just assumed that they're gonna walk through the floodwaters when they happen?
Thank you for that. And would you mind um, uh, just introducing yourself for the record?
Yes, sorry. My name is Helene Finger and uh, yeah, I live in San Luis Obispo.
Yeah. Thank you for that. We'll ask staff to comment on your question. Uh, Kevin, are there others who wish to speak?
At this time, there are no other hands raised. Uh, we'll just give people a couple of seconds to go ahead and. Chime in if they'd like to. Seeing none, chair, back to you.
Okay, good. And uh, I'll bring it back to the uh. Planning Commission for deliberation and first ask Kyle Bell if he has a response to the question that uh, his finger raised.
There it is. I lost my mute button. Okay, here we go.
Story of our lives.
Uh, so I did uh, provide a memo as attached to agenda correspondence that, that did uh, talk about. The flood concerns within the project in its consistency with the mitigated negative declaration. Uh, attached to that memo, we also included hydraulic um, hydrology and hydraulic um. Evaluation that was provided by Monsoon Consultants uh, regarding this project to, to describe how. Uh, the project will be able to comply with the best management practices of the city's uh, flood prevention regulations as well as stormwater control. Uh, requirements. And so the, the conclusion of the hydraulic study was that no additional mitigation is necessary. And the best management practices that are established within the city's standards and regulations were sufficient. In order to um, resolve any concerns or impacts related to the hundred year flood on this property. Uh, for example, all downtown is within the same flood zone, uh, and so there is. And so there's, there's standard procedures in place that the city has adopted to address new development in this flood zone pretty thoroughly. And so there's no, there's no surprises in this regarding our code about how to develop properties within this flood zone. So hopefully that clears up the, the concerns, but we can also have the applicant touch on a little bit more if we need to, to get more finer details. Let me know if there's any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of, of staff at this point from commissioners? I'm not seeing any buddy with a hand raised. So let's jump into deliberation. Who knows? There may still be another question before we go. We'd like to begin.
I'll just make a comment on, on the flood comments. So when you're in a hundred-year floodplain, your project is required not to exacerbate the floodplain. So if they filled the site, they would probably make it deeper elsewhere. So they wouldn't be allowed to do that without an exception. So that they let the water flow through during the flood. So basically, if you didn't want residents to walk through water and you wanted to raise the site, you made the site unbuildable. So that's why you either have to deal with the water or consider the site unbuildable. Or else develop something that you raise the site and raise all the surfaces up the water and you let the water flow below. So you have some sort of elevated deck-like surface. So anyway, it's a tough situation, but either the site's buildable or it's not. You have to deal with floodwaters.
Commissioner Khan, since you were jumping in and it was a good statement, do you want to just maybe help us along with a motion to, on this project?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I would adopt, I would recommend approval of this project. A mixed-use project with a density bonuses for the minor use permit. And that's my motion.
I, I would second that.
We have a second from Commissioner Dandicar. Let's have discussion.
This is Commissioner Wilkin.
Thank you.
I support the project. I think it's consistent with the general plan and zoning regulations. I think the concession and waiver being requested are, are reasonable and considering what they could have requested, the density bonus is well below what could have been requested. I think this is a reasonable location for for a mixed-use project, given the surrounding residential and the, the proximity to major activity areas. I do have a couple of concerns and I have some proposals to deal with those. One is the privacy concern between this site and the adjacent development to the south and to the east. And there, I would suggest that because we are going to be granting concession and waiver regarding the edge conditions that we beef up condition number 13 a little bit in order to maximize screening between the, the residences on the south and this project and the residences on the east and this project. And I think Kyle has some language that, that I proposed that I, I'd like to show at this time that, that accomplishes that additional screening. Just a modification to condition 13. And if staff could put that up on the screen, I'd appreciate it. And what, what the condition does is it, it specifies that the landscape screening would be on both the southern and the eastern perimeter because both of those perimeters are subject to the edge conditions. And that the, the height.
You can lock it up.
And the breadth.
Continue.
Can't hear me?
You're breaking up a little bit, Michael.
I'm sorry. I think my inter-internet connection is going. I'll try to log in again.
Well, we can see.
That sounds better now.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay. I think I'm having troubles, problems with my internet connection. So I'll try to be brief in case I, I, I leave. Anyway, I think this, these are minor tweaks that address the privacy concern. And my other concern has to do with pedestrian safety, especially for seniors that are walking to and from the site after dusk. And there is a little bit of law ballard lighting right now between Bridge Street and the bridge. But my suggestion is for additional pedestrian safety that there be some low-level lighting actually across the bridge to provide for safety and security for pedestrians walking across that bridge, especially at night. And especially since we're trying to promote pedestrian connections to the park and other areas adjacent. So this is a new condition that requires low-level pedestrian lighting along the bridge. And those are my two suggestions that, that would address the concerns I have. I'm hoping the commission would look upon those favorably. With those conditions, I would, I would support the project and am prepared to vote in favor of it.
Let's check in with maker of the motion, Commissioner Khan.
Yeah, I would be willing to add those two conditions to my motion.
And Commissioner Dandicar?
I agree. They seem reasonable.
Okay. So we've got two amendments that we've added in. Who else would like to comment or discuss or raise concerns?
I'll chime in if that's okay.
Please, Commissioner Shoresman.
I too, in, in general, am in a big support of this project. I think it's a great location. We've commented, multiple people have commented on the access to the park and other amenities. You know, it's not far from shopping. It's, it's just a, it's close to open space, lots of availability of, you know, ways to stretch your legs and, and get some exercise. And I'm also super appreciative of Haslow in general for helping San Luis Obispo be, you know, one of the, be the leading city in the county for helping us build affordable housing here within the city limits. I want to thank the applicant and staff for the clarification on the windows and the, the privacy issues. I, I heard the concerns from the neighbors and I have neighbors close to me as well that I sometimes wonder if they can see in my bathroom window. So I appreciate the clarification showing the, the distance and the added, the added trees that they have put in and the more mature trees. Like I said, I empathize with the neighbors, but I think that the distance between the buildings is generally sufficient and the, and the extra foliage will just make things a little bit more private for those existing residents. Along with the phased-in approach of the building, I think in, in that one respect, it will be good and sort of easier for the current residents to have these buildings come in sort of slowly over time. So it doesn't seem like bam, all of a sudden there's 94 units there that, that weren't there before. I do have some concerns and some of them were mentioned in some of the public comments about traffic on Bridge Street. I, I hear everything that Kyle's saying about the overall impact and that because of the mix of, of unit types, the senior living, the affordable housing and the fewer parking spots that, that this may not have as big a traffic impact on Bridge Street as, as it might otherwise have. But I do know from personal experience that that Bridge Street is a main thoroughfare for bikes. And that passageway through the park is a, is a very popular one for middle school students that are traveling across town to go to Laguna. And I know there are some long-term plans in the bike, the active transportation plan for improving that intersection between Bridge and South Higera and what is now Madonna. But some of that depends on Caltrans moving out of their current location. And it's probably a long ways off in the future that will make that long-term plan go into action. So I, I would like to suggest to staff that in the, in the meantime, as these new units are being built, we consider some temporary fixes, even if it's just charros and signage along Bridge Street, showing that it's a shared trafficway between bikes and cars to kind of alert drivers that yes, there, there are bikes traveling through this road and, and they are allowed to be in the, in the traffic way. I think that would go a long ways just to creating a, a sense of comfort for, for cyclists in the meantime, before those longer-term solutions can be created. And lastly, I had one minor suggestion. And part of the reason for me asking questions of the applicant to see if they were amicable to putting some first-floor bicycle parking in some of the units was to, you know, to accommodate the, the can, the change in language that I'm proposing to condition number nine on page 33 of the packet, just adding that one sentence that creates a condition for adding at least one first-floor secured lockable bike storage area to accommodate larger bikes and electric bikes. So not everybody who has a bike has to cart it up the stairs or into the elevator into their unit, especially a large bike that might not fit. So I would support the project and Commissioner Wilkins suggested changes to the conditions and, and propose one small change of my own.
Good. Let me do the same thing again. Go back to Commissioner Khan and ask if he can accept this as an amendment.
My other question for Commissioner Shoresman. You don't talk about a number of spots. You want to include some sort of number in there. I know that it depends on the architecture and the size of the space they have. But if you're going to do something like that, you definitely want more than one. So.
Yeah, my, thank you for that. That's a good question. My, my language addition was to just propose a, a minimum of one. Not a minimum of one space, but a minimum of one parking area. So you know, I, I could throw out a number, but I would really leave it to the discretion of the applicant and the community development director to decide what is a big enough space to accommodate. You know, I would say in a, in a development that size, you know, I guess at how many, how many bikes would need to be stored? And I would hope that the applicant would include more than one indoor storage area, perhaps one per building. I was just trying to kind of set a minimum.
All right. Yep. In that case, I will accept the condition and I'll add to my motion.
Commissioner Dandicar, do you have a second?
Um, I, I, I think I like the idea of leaving some discretion to the, to the, to Haslow and I'm concerned about, I, I wonder if you could just ask Haslow right now if they're open to this. Can we do that? Do they see any major problems with doing this?
We, we could do that. I'd have to kind of reopen that part of the public hearing. I, I thought we did hear from Mr. Schneider that they would try to work with this. Both of them actually, but I'm.
I did ask them, I did ask them during the Q and A if they were amicable to providing indoor parking on the first floor. And they mentioned that they believed that they, well, they did have some indoor parking already outlined, but it was mostly short-term parking. And they expressed that they were amicable to the idea of having some lockable indoor storage for long-term parking as well.
I, I think I'd like not to put a number on it, but sort of have it be more as give them some options of how many to provide. It's a great project. We need this housing. So I don't want to unduly burden them if possible.
So as the second, are you accepting the language in blue that's on the screen?
Could you repeat, please, plan should also at least one first-floor secured unlockable bike story. Yeah, this doesn't specify the numbers. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that. But I prefer not to have as defined 20 bikes or whatever.
So the maker of the motion and the, and the second agree to the amendments. Good.
Chair Jorgensen?
Yes.
It's Mike Wilken. I just had a question for Commissioner Shoresman on this language. Is, is this language intended to require more bike parking spaces or it just speaks to the type of storage or the location of the storage?
Well, they, they stated, and I think Kyle agreed that, that the required amount of storage is, is already in the project in, in the form of inside unit wall racks or mountings that are inside each one or two-bedroom unit. So I guess this would be, I don't, I don't know. I, they, I think they emphasize that they are more than meeting their both short-term and long-term parking requirements. So I don't know that it would be additional parking above and beyond what they are already including, but it might mean the conversion of some spaces from short to long term is kind of what I was understanding. But I would have to, I would defer again to to the applicant and to the community development director to work out those details. My intent was just to make sure that there was some indoor first-floor, you know, lockable storage that is not on the second or third floor of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So good. I think we're about there. I'll make a comment or two as well. When we've got seniors and families kind of sharing the same public spaces, the management of bike parking is a really critical issue, actually, just in terms of pedestrian safety on the campus, if we will. So I do think this is worth a lot of attention. I'm really glad that commissioners have raised these issues and that we've added them to conditions. I also want to say that I think this is a, a really well-designed project on a difficult site. Not just because it's a in a floodplain, but just in a whole bunch of ways, it's constrained and they're close neighbors and all. And I'm very pleased to support it. I'm really glad to see the mix of senior housing proposed as part of it. I think that's, I think in a lot of ways, and the design of the units themselves and just the way that the, the open space in the whole site is, is, is laid out. I really feel in some ways like I have not seen a better project for folks who are actually going to live in this, particularly families. So many of the projects are so constrained by costs and they don't look like it's going to be easy to live in. Many of them don't look that way. I, I really feel like this is a really sound direction. I'm really glad to see it. Glad to support it. So with that, I'm ready unless someone's got something really big and important to say. I'd like to ask the city clerk to call the roll. Unless there's any clarification needed. We've got three amendments essentially to conditions that have been moved and seconded. Can we go ahead then, Kevin? With the roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Commissioner Dondekar?
Yes.
Commissioner Shoresman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilken?
Yes.
Chair Jorgensen?
Yes.
Motion.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Good discussion. So we have one further item, if Tyler is available, and that's to provide an update on the upcoming agenda.
Great. Thanks Chair Jorgensen, members of the commission. Just kind of giving out a forecast of where we're, we're going over the next few meetings. So next meeting is September 8th. And we have one item on that agenda and it is an appeal of a director decision, which was to deny a, a metal carport accessory structure that didn't have setbacks on two sides on a property that is on the city's master list of historic resources. This also includes kind of ongoing code enforcement case as well. And so Brian Lavelle, senior planner is going to be the liaison at that meeting. I was the one that took action on that project. So, so I can't be a part of that hearing. So he will be, be in that meeting in my place. Our next meeting is September 22nd. Two items, a couple of good ones here. First of them is the objective design standards that staff's been working on over the past six to eight months. And this is coming to the planning commission with a recommendation from the architecture review commission. And so we're, we'll be excited to present that to you for your recommendation ultimately that would move on to the city council. And second item of that night is the Avila Ranch home design. So there's a few different product types that are under review, also reviewed by the architecture review commission with a recommendation of the planning commission. And so we will be presenting that for final decision by the planning commission. And then looking out to the first meeting in October, which is on 13th, we have one item currently scheduled. Again, this is the zoning regulations update. This has kind of three major areas that we're focused on, mostly cleanup items. So looking at first bucket of cleanup items for just clarity and intent. Second bucket is some housing element policies that were, or excuse me, programs that were adopted in the recent update to our housing element that we need to implement. And then the third is the, some changes needed to reflect consistency with the recently adopted airport land use plan. And so that will also be coming to you with a recommendation for planning commission to the city council. And I did get the notes on reporting back on, on the 116 Serrano. So, you know, staff is, will continue to look into that situation. And whether it's on the, the, one of the meetings in September, whether it's the first or second, you know, we'll, we'll come back to you with an update on that. And then I guess finally I did meet with our IT department today, just kind of looking at different options for the planning commission as we move forward. Kind of with our digital platform in terms of, you know, media equipment and how that might look. And so whether we're going to do email accounts for commissioners. So they're doing a little more research and I should have more information in the next few weeks on that.
Great.
Hey Kyle, I'm sorry. It's Kevin. When you started your review, you noted that the next meeting was September 22nd rather than September 8th. And I just.
I don't think I, I don't. Was it me? Are you referring to me or Kyle?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Tyler, you.
I, I thought I, I thought I said September 8th for the appeal item that's coming forward.
I, I heard September 8th.
Okay, I heard September 8th.
My mistake. Sorry.
Hey Tyler, I do have one request on that concern about the tree removal. If you could just make sure in your presentation, you have some sort of exhibit. I want to wrap my head around that somebody actually came on somebody's property and chopped down trees. I mean, you know, so just make sure that you have something that shows where the property is and where the trees were taken. I just, I just flabbergasted it. Someone would come on someone's property and cut down their trees.
Sure. Yeah. I don't, I don't have all the details of right now, but I hear, I hear what you're saying and, and we'll definitely kind of show, you know, to best of our ability, kind of what we know and where things are.
Yeah, thank you.
Good. Thank you, Tyler. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Yep. I think we're good. So I'm ready to adjourn. The next regular meeting of the planning commission will be scheduled for September 8th, 2021 via teleconference. We're adjourned.
All right.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.